Call to order, Ms. Santiago, can you please call the row?
Here.
Ms. Lando, here.
Karen Taylor, here.
Julio Flores, here.
Chantel Brody, here.
Aisha Clark, here.
Fronter Nancy, Kimberly Oliver, here.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening. As the Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the October 16th regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our TV viewers. The Board, the Superintendent and I are pleased that you're here to join us as we celebrate achievement, review information, make policy decisions related to effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on have this evening, excuse me, have been posted as required by state law. As the Board of Education, as, excuse me, Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems for individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. There are times when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to time designated for public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking when others are speaking. Since it's legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask periodically, I should ask for order, excuse me, periodically, should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of our school system and we thank you very much for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. And Mr. Flores will now read this in Spanish. You can read for me.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del 16 de octubre de 2018. Damos una caridad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las sobretendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria. Todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos, celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténgase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Now for public comments. Yep, Ms. Taylor.
We, as a Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is necessary. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar la agricultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine su comentario. Gracias.
The first name appears to be Megan Monasev?
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Moncrief. I'm here on behalf of my son Marlon Moncrief. I'm having a problem with achievement first. I know the school is under the state, but I don't know where to go about this, so I came here to see if I can get some help or some suggestion or something. On May 20th, my son was suspended from the school. He was supposed to return on September 17th. It's two months out. The day before he was supposed to return to school, I get a phone call and said, "He's gonna be out for another two weeks." That would be October 1st. On the 31st of September, I got another phone call on the Sunday and saying that my son is not gonna return until the 9th. I get him dressed on the 9th and walked at the school and I was turned away saying that he can't return until the 23rd because they having a test and he's not gonna be able to sit the test because he was out and he's missed out on a lot of stuff, so he's not gonna be able to take that test. So he's gonna be out until the 23rd. So now I'm here, I don't know if on the 23rd or the day before the 23rd, I'm gonna get a next phone call that he's gonna be out for another time again. Still don't know what's going on because every time I go or I call, I get turned away. I don't get any positive talk from them. Okay, this is what going on and this is what going on. Nothing. So I would like to, if I could get some justice or some suggestion from somebody to know where to go or what to do about this.
Hiya Cynthiaany.
No, I'm just wondering if we're able to get some form of accommodation if people aren't able to stand at the microphone? A chair or something? I don't know if that's possible. Because not everyone's, may not be able to stand at the mic.
Check and see. Good evening, everyone. I'm Hiya Cynthiaany. A resident, I like this standing up one. Hope you all doing well this evening? Okay, so I'm here and a few things, and I hope I have enough time to say what I need to say. I have some good news, now for a change, even though I always have bad and good news. You know, last year we started a sewing class for some of our special needs at Hartford High. And this year we start again. And I can let you know, walking into those classes, those kids are really engaged, alright? And us doing the sewing, making pillows and aprons and stuff like that, those skills are really, those kids are really enjoying it. And we know those kids are not going to college. These are kids that we need to have a life skill. So when they do leave Hartford High, they can pick up a job. What is to sew, whether it's, whatever they may wanna do, cooking, whatever the case may be. But we, as I said, with the school system, we can't lump all our kids in one and say, "Yeah, they're all going off to college." We need to look at trades for them, alright? And I'm hoping you Superintendent will take that initiative to look and see that all our children, yeah, we wanna push college, of course, but all of them are not going to college, but let's prepare them that in getting the real world, they can do something to help themselves. So I just wanna let you know, they were very much engaged. Good news, in September, we've been working, you know, with our state rep, Matt Ritter. He's not really my state rep, but he represents the city of Hartford. Been working with him to look for some funding to do the football field at Hartford High, right? And on September, I got a call from him and saying, "Hi Cynthia, we need to come because the governor is gonna make bonding for a million dollar to do the football field and the light at Hartford High." Now, we were awarded that million dollar. Now, I'm hoping that the school board work with Public Works Department to move this project along. With the help of our Dr. Jose Rivas Cologne, we've worked very well together. The swimming pool at Hartford High is all done, maybe, maybe little minor things need to get done. But these are the good things I wanna, I wanna see accomplished. You know, I come here and I complain and I make all my complaints known, but when things get done, it makes me feel good that I'm not just coming here running my mouth and nothing gets done. So I just wanna let you know, I'm working for the betterment of Hartford. I'm not working because I like to come here and tell you, people, "Oh, yay, you're not doing this and you're not doing that." When I see it wrong, I'm coming to tell you, it's wrong. And when it's right, I'll tell you it's right. So, Dr. Rivas Cologne, a great person to work with. He's a great person that we have in this city to work with. One quick more thing, I just wanna let you know that, you know, I'm planning to go to the state and the next Board meeting to talk about the fact we need to dig a hole and put chef case into it because, look, it has destroyed our community. I'm telling you that for sure. When we started it, it was good intention and it was about getting quality in all our buildings. Not shifting our children into the suburban town, whatever the case may be. We, when my kids were going to school, we had white kids, every kind of kids within our building. And you know why they were there? Because there was quality in those buildings. When there's no quality, no resources in the school, what parents are always gonna up for that, for somewhere else. Let's bring back our neighborhood school. Let's bring back the resource we need to get into these buildings so we can make people or parents feel good about wanting to send their kids into these schools. But me, I am going to the state to talk about that. Chef need to go into a hole right now. It's destroying our community. It's emotionally, socially, and every way. Our Hartford is not better because of it, okay? Our children are not accessing all those millions of dollars we have in Hartford High, Buckley, and the Weaver to go off to college because they go to the suburban school and they can't access these money. So there's a lot of things white kids should be in Hartford School. Let's try to provide some service, good quality in these buildings so we can bring our kids back home. Thank you.
Is it Richard Demage? Demang?
Good afternoon. I am a relentless, hard-working, dedicated, caring, passionate, self-sacrificing, and selfless, highly qualified and highly talented expert in the field of language education and acquisition, a child advocate and defender, a social justice and equity worker, and a very proud, black male teacher, one of very few, at Hartford Public High School. I have amazingly smart children. Children in my classroom who make me laugh every day. And I come to school with the utmost joy in teaching them and also sitting back knowing that they too, at the end of the day, will have taught me so much more. I love all of my students. I love my colleagues, who are hard-working teachers, who are dedicated and also selfless. And I love my school. I love Hartford, live and pay taxes in Hartford. It is for this reason I am here. I am here to shoulder up, as the Superintendent has often asked us to do, and most importantly, to speak up on behalf of the children of Hartford and to initiate a call to action to everyone who truly believes that our children and families deserve the very best education this country, this state, and this city can provide. At the end of this last school year, I attended our graduation ceremony and sat and watched multiple students fraudulently graduating without meeting graduation requirements. They were pushed through by administration simply to get rid of them, but also simply to boost graduation rates. That is a shame. At the beginning of this school year, block scheduling, despite the empirical evidence proving its harm, that was recklessly forced upon our students and staff along with excessive periods of advisory resulting in several egregious outcomes for our school community. Chief among these are a 61-minute loss of instructional time per class per week, students' educational progresses being deliberately sabotaged and undermined by a practice that does not meet the needs of our students and our families. For our students, given their demographics, realities, and needs, block scheduling is, simply put, academic malpractice. Decisions are made without consulting the very people whom these decisions impact adversely. The obvious loss of total time per topic in most block schedules and systems and the well-known problems of learning in big chunks versus small chunks tied to the human limitations of attention span all point to the potential for academic harm under block scheduling. And this comes from the largest meta-analysis research of 58 empirical studies, the largest ever done in the United States of America. Ladies and gentlemen, our children are way too precious to us. We should not be experimenting with them and setting them up for failure. Hartford Public Schools continue to persist in failed strategies and that saddens us all. Shame on you. Parents, community stakeholders, Board members, I call upon you to speak up, to shoulder up, and demand the very best for our Hartford children. What you ignore, you empower sadly.
Thank you. Arjo Winch?
Good evening. I'm Councilwoman Arjo Winch, Chair, Labor, Education, Youth and Workforce for the City of Hartford. And I wanna start on a positive note that I thank you all for the translation of your instructions in Spanish for those who are not English speakers so that they can also understand that process and what it is. I'm gonna like to invite you all to the Course of Integration meeting, which is touching on what Hiya Cynthiaany was talking about on October the 23rd at 4:30 at the Hartford Public Library to discuss the effects of chef on our children today. I'm also here to talk about two developments. The MLK Project and also the potential grocery store site here by Capital Prep. I was at a meeting yesterday and to my dismay that the Design Committee voted to go forward with their plans about the changes that they had made or wanted to make in that MLK Project without going back to the community, without going back to those organizations that they consulted with while building the project and deciding what was to be built. But now that money's getting cut less than what they anticipated the bonding to be, I think they should go back to that same group, that same organization, those same parents, and actually get a buy-in and maybe ask the parents, "Where do you think that we could make the cuts and still have this building, you know, thriving and educational and the children inside the building still have a building that looks predominantly the way that they had previously designed it?" The other thing that I have the concerns about, the grocery store conversation, is that it would cut off two-thirds of the green space behind Capital Prep. And more importantly than that, putting a grocery store back there, we're not in control of who goes back there, what the customers are, what their travels are. And when they're there at night, you know, who's sleeping on the benches? It looks great during the daytime, but at nighttime, you don't know. Alcohol, bottles, needles, all those things will be left out there for the danger of the children who are walking to and from the schools. And it's, you know, my concern that we're taking away children's green space and we know that it's mandatory a part of the curriculum that our young people get out and have recess. And I'm not even gonna say who, but one suggested that they could come down here, you know, and play. So the first time I saw somebody's child walking down Main Street, I'm calling the police and DCF.
Raquel Calderon?
Good evening, dear members. I'm here to talk about a couple subjects. One, I'd like to talk on behalf of Rinzoli School. I've been substituting for many times at that school and I observe Mr. De Jesus and I just wanted to talk on his behalf. I think he's an excellent asset for the school. And I just found out the other day that he's not, his title is not a principal and I'd like to know why. He's excellent. The children loves him. He does an excellent job. And you know why? And he's always present with the children there, helping them and looking out. I don't understand why he's, he doesn't have the title. The school is always running smooth with him there. I saw him, how he takes care of the property, how he talks to the children, and everyone loves him. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is about prevention and danger prevention. Something is gonna happen someday if we don't prevent. I do not like to hear that teachers have been physically attacked, that parents are coming and alleging that teachers are prejudiced, utilizing their race or their ethnic group or whatever and alleging and calling them prejudiced. You know, sometimes teacher tells them what to do and they don't, they don't like to hear that. And they don't have to come to the school and attack the teachers. Teachers are being really, you know, downgrade a lot lately and we need to prevent danger in the school right now. And I don't know what the Superintendent can do about that. We need to have perhaps more security in the schools and they should not be allowed to trespass to the classrooms. Because if something happens to someone in the future, I mean, it's just gonna be so sad, so I need to see something done about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Emilda, is it Barajas? I'm sorry. First name is definitely Emilda.
Buenas tardes. Yo soy Emilda Barajas y tengo un hijo de educación especial. Yo quiero preguntarle a Leslie Torres, ¿qué está haciendo para cambiar el sistema educativo de las escuelas de Hartford? Porque hasta donde yo veo, no ha habido ningún cambio. Este, de hecho, yo tuve problema en una escuela con mi hijo. Entonces, yo tuve que buscar ayuda y no de ustedes, sino de la señora Damaris Bolorín y June Sellers, que fueron las que me ayudaron a buscarle una escuela para mi hijo. Que la escuela...
Con permiso, señora. Puede tener su momento para yo poder traducirle.
Okay.
She is a parent and she has a child in public, in special education and she is concerned that her child is not getting proper services and she wants to know what is going on with special education. She said that she had an issue and she had to go to Dr. June Sellers, who helped her find another school to place her child in.
Ahora, ahora mismo, él está en una escuela, a una escuela que es magnet. Entonces, en la escuela me están diciendo que esa es una escuela muy fuerte para él. Yo quiero saber por qué una escuela, aunque sea magnet, no puede estar preparada para la, o mi hijo no puede tener los servicios que él necesita. Porque para mí, una escuela sería...
Puede detenerse de en cuando para darme ocasión. Her child is currently at a magnet school and she's been told that the work there is too difficult for him. And she doesn't understand why a magnet school is not prepared to provide the resources for children like hers.
Este, yo quiero, este, ¿por qué mi hijo no puede tener los, recibir los servicios que él necesita en esa escuela, no porque sea una escuela magnet? ¿Por qué no hacer el cambio? ¿Por qué no hacer algo para mejorar, para mejorar el sistema dentro de las escuelas, del personal dentro de las escuelas? ¿Por qué no, este, ¿por qué no decir, preocuparse, preocuparse por la educación? De lo, no nada más de los niños con educación especial, sino de los niños en general? ¿Por qué no nada más, porque mi hijo sea de educación especial, ha sufrido abuso? Sino también hay más niños que están sufriendo esos abusos? Simples y sencillamente, nada más que muchas. No, no lo dicen.
Despacito. So she says that she'd like to understand why the schools are not prepared and don't have the right personnel to provide the education, not just for her child, who is a special education child, but for all the children. She sees that some children have been abused in the schools. Again, not just her child, but many other children.
Ahora yo le quiero preguntar a Leslie Torres, ¿qué haría ella en mi lugar si a su hijo le negaran los servicios que él necesita?
She asked for the Superintendent, "What would you do in my place if your child were denied the services that he needs?"
Porque yo creo que ella es madre y yo creo que todos queremos lo mejor para nuestros hijos. Y yo como madre, la escuela de mis sueños es que mi hijo, aunque sea una escuela magnet, que él tenga todos los servicios que él necesita. Y yo quiero que ella se quede con eso, que como madre, ¿qué haría? ¿Qué haría ella en mi lugar? ¿Qué buscaría ella para su hijo si fuera el hijo de ella?
Hey, I know the Superintendent is a mother and I know that all mothers like me want the best for their children. And I'd like her to keep thinking of, "What would she do if it were her child to provide the best..." to provide the best services for her child and to try to achieve that for all the children?"
Y a mí me gustaría ver los cambios del sistema educativo, porque hasta ahorita yo no he visto ningún cambio.
Yeah, I'd like to see some changes in the educational system because up to now I have not seen them. Gracias. Señora, una pregunta. ¿Cuál escuela es que está su niño? HMTC. Yeah, HMTC. She said it's the Trinity College Magnet School. Yeah.
Perla Valeska.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Perla Villascas, y también tengo un niño especial. Mi niño está en Bur Latinos. El motivo que estoy aquí es para dejarle saber a ella que mi hijo está siendo abusado en esa escuela. Yo he tenido dos PPTs, y yo ya no lo quiero ver en esa escuela. Yo, la viceprincipal me dijo que no me lo podía cambiar, que porque él tenía todos los servicios que él necesitaba. Pero yo no veo que ellos están haciendo nada.
My child is also a special education child. He's going to Burnst Latino Studies Academy. So far, we've had two PPTs, but I don't see that he's receiving the services that he needs. I have asked to transfer the child out of that school, so I don't want to see him there anymore. But I've been told that he's not eligible for transfer because he's receiving all the services that he is entitled to.
En otras ocasiones, mi niño fue golpeado, y nadie, no me informaron. Si no, yo voy arriba a chequear a mi hijo. Mi hijo tenía una mordida en el cuello, y le pegaron en la cabeza.
She says at one time her child was attacked, and no one told her about it. And she went to the school to check on him, and she found that he had a bite mark on his neck and that he had been hit over the head.
El otra vez lo encontré tirado en el piso, sin zapatos y sin comer, y la maestra especial con todos los niños en la cafetería, y mi niño sin comer hasta las una y media de la tarde.
Another time she found him lying on the floor, and he had not been fed. The special ed teacher had taken all the other children to the cafeteria, and her child was not fed until past one o'clock.
Dice que todos los servicios están bien para él, pero yo en realidad, yo no veo nada mejor, y en esa escuela hay muchos incidentes. Yo estudio clase de inglés, hay GED, y yo veo que hay muchos incidentes. El security siempre trae a los niños. He encontrado a mi niño con el security, con la trabajadora social. Y a mi niño ya no está en el salón, ya no tiene la educación adecuada para él.
I'm told that he's receiving all the services, but I don't see it. I spend a lot of time there because I'm taking GED classes at the school. I see that the child is often pulled out by security. Sometimes he's sitting with a social worker, and he's not getting his classes, he's not getting the services that he needs.
Yo estoy desesperada porque yo no sé qué cambios se está viendo en esa escuela. Yo quiero saber qué usted va a hacer por esa escuela, porque, por las demás escuelas. Principalmente, la Bur Latinos es un caso.
I'm feeling desperate, because I don't know what to do anymore. And I'd like to know what you, superintendent, are doing about this school and about the other schools that have similar issues, some at my wit's end.
Y yo quiero fuera a mi hijo de esa escuela.
And I do want my child out of that school.
Yo no lo quiero ver ahí.
I don't want to see him there anymore.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Anna Hernandez.
Hi. I'm glad to be here. The only thing is I'm not so happy. Okay, I write what I'm going to say today. My name is Anna Hernandez. I'm Vivianas Martinez's mom. I'm from Buckley High School. She's in 11th grade, Special Education Content Room. My daughter Viviana, she has 16 years old, and this is her fifth year in this district in Hartford Education Board. Two years she was in the Breachhead School, and now she's in Buckley. She is diagnosed with autism, cerebral palsy, microcephaly, mental impairment, asthma, seasonal allergy, runny nose, and seizures caused by epilepsy. One to three monthly especially, but not limit, before, during, or after her menstruation period. It could be issues of health, stress, overstimulation, etc. She's a non-verbal communicator, only few words in Spanish, and only one sentence in English I will say when I finish. She don't stand, she don't walk, she only crawls. She has absent episodes that affects her. When she come back, she's confused. She has to be fit, change diaper, and all her needs be assisted or given by a responsible adult. I have to be infected of changing her diapers. Once I put a pad on her diaper, and she came back with the pad, and the diaper was with oiling, two pounds wet, they didn't change her all day. Another day, she came with her pants dry. But it was dry, but she did peep all day. They changed only the diaper, not the pant, and they didn't clean the wheelchair. So I was all year, since classes begin, being very infected with this because nine to two o'clock, if she doesn't do peep, at nine o'clock, she has to wait to two o'clock. And she saw a lady, then she has to use pad when she's menstruating, that she cannot wait so much for that. Seizures and eyes, okay. The education plan says that she needs the adult support, not adult supporters. Yesterday, she came from school with her lips broken, bleeding, and they said that she was playing with toys, and they didn't give me no explanation what to do with her mouth. She bleeding, she has appointment for that. They have here a paper that didn't explain me nothing about the nurse, what was her job to do, to say to me what happened with her in the room. It doesn't say if she eat, only what they give her for feed. Bathroom, they change her, but they don't say if she wet. The plan, individual plan education, said that she needed a supporter, so I have to move for another school because I'm not satisfied with the services she's receiving. The only word that sentence that my daughter knows to say is that, "I don't know." I don't know what's happening, that she's not receiving the services. I've been walking back in the district so I could be heard, and I had a, I asked for a meeting with you, Leslie. I had a where June Sellers is written here, and I didn't receive response because I want a meeting, that's why I'm here today, because I'm not being heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Damaris Bolorin, I'm sorry. Bolorin.
Buenas tardes. Esto me voy a dirigir en español porque quiero que los padres que traje entiendan, no porque no se habla el inglés. I'm going to say this in Spanish because I want the parents that were just up here to actually be able to hear directly in my own words, in our native language, what I'm going to say, okay? Because it pertains to them. Porque tiene que ver con ellos. Sí, esto, que voy a, I'm going to be, like I said, I'm going to talk in my native language because I want my parents to understand what I'm saying, word by word, okay? And because what I'm gonna say pertains to them. Tiene que ver con ellos, con los papás. Oh, yo puedo traducir, se me da un tiempito porque tengo la capacidad para hacerlo. Okay, no problem. If I get a little extra time, I can go back and forth in Spanish and English. I do this on the side professionally, so I don't have any problem. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Muy buenas tardes. Good evening. Mi nombre es Damaris Bolorin. My name is Damaris Bolorin. Por sobre todo, en obvio, soy una activista y una abogadora. I am an activist and an advocate. Y hoy estoy aquí representando a estas madres. I am here today representing these parents, not just them, no solamente ellas, sino muchas otras, but many others. He's, he's tenido la oportunidad de visitar a muchas escuelas en Hartford. I've had the opportunity to visit schools in Hartford, y he tenido la oportunidad de hablar con padres. I've had the opportunity to speak with parents, parents of children with disability. Padres con niños con discapacidades, que son los más vulnerables. Pero obviamente, con todo esto que está pasando, but obviously with everything that's going on, what is proving to me, into society, lo que prueba a mí a la sociedad, es que el sistema no le importa, that the system doesn't care. Why? El por qué? Cuando tenemos niños con discapacidades, siendo esto por su comportamiento, están siendo castigados because of their behavior, que ellos no tienen control, they don't have no control, they're being punished. ¿Cómo estos niños están siendo castigados? Obligándolos a limpiar las escaleras de las escuelas, being forced to clean the stairs of the school. Y estoy hablando de niños en escuela elemental. I'm talking about children in elementary school. Obligándolos a lavar los inodoros, being forced to actually clean the toilets. Y cuando no, and when not, los sacan del salón por el día completo, ah, being pulled out of the room for the whole day. So, le están robando su educación, they're robbing their education. Encima de eso, and on top of that, muchos de estos padres se quejan, a lot of these parents have come forward. Leslie, tú, you, that's muy al tanto, are very aware de muchas de estas situaciones, of a lot of these situations. Yo hablé contigo en dos o tres ocasiones, I spoke with you in two or three occasions. Te comuniqué mucho de estas situaciones, I communicated to you a lot of these situations. Te dije que quería ser tus ojos y tus oídos, I told you that I was willing to be your eyes and your ears. No te pedí dinero, I didn't ask you for a dollar, for a dollar. Because what I was, lo que yo te estaba ofreciendo, what I was offering you, no tenía un signo de dólar, you didn't have a dollar sign. Yo lo que quería era ayudar y aportar. All I wanted to do was to help. Que tú me dijiste, what did you say to me? Oh, yo te llamo, I will call you. ¿Cuántos meses han pasado, Leslie? How many months has it gone by, Leslie? Ni una palabra, not a word. The story, la historia de esta madre, the stories that these parents shared, no es nada nuevo, it's nothing new. Because you, your offices are very much aware, tus oficinas lo saben. Pero tú no has hecho nada. You haven't done anything. Lo único que yo te tengo que decir a ti es, según tú entras, puedes salir, y tú lo sabes. Saying, "When you came in, you can go out." Nosotros necesitamos alguien que verdaderamente ame a los padres, a los niños. That's really gonna love and care for our children and our parents. Porque ellos merecen el respeto, they deserve respect. Especialmente los niños con condiciones, especially the children with special needs. Many of them haven't not even gotten an evaluation, no han sido evaluados. Especially the ones that came from Puerto Rico. Those that came from Puerto Rico después de María, after the Hurricane María. I've met with many of them, and their stories are horrifying. Los historias son horribles. Y tú que has hecho, what have you done? Because si tú hubieras hecho algo, if you would have done something, the stories that were shared, las historias que ellos compartieron, y muchas otras historias de horror. And many of the stories of horror wouldn't be happening, Leslie, no estuvieran, no estuvieran, yo los siento. Yo he trabajado con Miss Sellers, yo he trabajado con la señora Sellers. He trabajado con Miss Jackson, he trabajado con las, todas saben los problemas de estos padres. They are very much aware. I've emailed, I have pictures, yo tengo fotos, de los golpes del hijo de Perla. Of one of the parents that just came out, where their child had been bit and had been scratched in the neck. The first thing I did was send an email to Miss Sellers in the picture of how his face looked. This is what's happening in your schools. Esto es lo que está pasando en tu escuela. Y lo siento, and I'm very sorry. Como tú dices, tú eres la superintendente, you are the superintendent. Ellos son tus empleados, but guess what? As a superintendent, como superintendente, you are the captain of the ship. Tú eres la capitana del barco, y si tú no veras tu tripulación, el barco se te hundirá. And if you don't keep your eyes on your tripulant, your ship is going to sink. So you know my advice to you is, me, me, that's what it is. Por favor, como decimos en Puerto Rico, mamita, ponte en las piras. O te peinas, o te haces rolo, pero ya es tiempo, okay? Porque esto tiene que parar aquí, y yo espero que estos padres, I hope that these parents, salgan de aquí con soluciones, with solutions. Porque este, este es solamente la capita de bizcocho. Pero el, la capa completa de bizcocho, el frosting, lo vamos a ir a llevar allá en la menestra, donde tú estás, en tu palacio. Porque si eso es lo que hay que hacer, eso es lo que vamos a hacer, lo siento, pero esto ya, ya estos padres, los niños no pueden seguir siendo acusados, y menos los niños con discapacidad, porque esto es un mochón no. Your system get away with a crime, but guess what? If a parent does that, their children be removed. Ain't gonna happen, not anymore. This stops, and it stops here.
I'm standing here. I came in late. I wasn't able to sign up. I want to start by saying, could we do signups online? When I'm running from work or to something else, I could sign up, you know, even if I'm running a little bit late. And please forgive me, I'm gonna ask the audience, you know, for a little grace this evening that I could address the board, please. It's a tough time. The district is going through much turmoil. I am going through much personal turmoil.
Let me just interrupt one second.
Sorry.
That was not the last person on the list.
So I should wait?
Please.
All right, I appreciate that. I'm coming back.
Millie Arcinegas.
I didn't, I forgot the woman's name that just finished speaking. But there was a large portion of that testimony or statement that was in Spanish and not English. And so we needed that last portion of it translated. So I don't know if she can come back and say it again, or she's talking to someone else. But I'm gonna need that in English. Forgive me.
That's okay.
Well, no, you can, she can come back. You can say what you have to say, but at some point, I need her back.
Where do you want me to be?
Right there.
Good evening, board members. My name is Millie Arcinegas, and I am the executive director of the Hartford Parent University. You know, it's disheartening to, for these mothers, these mothers, to have to fight every day. They get up in the morning, and some of them take two hours to get their kids ready, only to have to go to the school to see if their child is getting a proper education, and then to come and find out that they've been with the security guard all day. And then to come and find out that they've been with the security guard all day. And these are authentic voices that we hear. And I wanna be clear on that. Because what we, what we're trying to do at Hartford Parent University is we're trying to build the confidence so that these mothers can come to this mic. That's the first battle. This thing here. It's very intimidating for them. Second battle is for them to articulate what they feel and what's happening at their school. We can collaborate a lot better than this. And they have gone through the process. And Dr. Superintendent, I have talked to you, and I have gotten calls about these ladies from your team. But the problem still exists. And I don't know what to tell them. I don't. Is it gonna get better the next day? I don't know. They only know that. And so I ask that we, I mean, even with this translation, our district is sixty-six percent Hispanic. But yet, we don't translate from English to Spanish. We don't have the tools that they need so that they can hear this, this meeting in their own language. It's a little ironic for me. Person comes up here, she speaks Spanish, and Mr. Flores, you translate in English. It should be reciprocal. So that families that have come from Puerto Rico and other places that's only Spanish-speaking, sixty-six percent are Hispanic. And we have to think about that when we want parents more engaged in this process. Because it's only through their input, through their input, that we're going to make these schools better. And Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, you have done that since the beginning. You have, you had us at the table from the beginning. But the schools, the pushback that we're getting as parents is now reflective on the kids. And that's where we say no más. That's where we say no más. So we will continue to collaborate with you as an organization, Hartford Parent University, and as parents and as children so that we can shift this ship in the right direction, just like as you started, Dr. Superintendent, Madam Superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Leslie?
So as, uh, my name is Natalie Langlez. It's kind of difficult to introduce myself, so I've created my own little niche. I represent the cohort of MLK students who are now housed at the Rossin School. Coming right back to MLK August 2020. I represent that cohort right now. Um, so as I was saying earlier on, the district is going through a lot. And I myself have, has, you know, I had a rough start. But I wanna be the parent who always comes up here optimistic. You're my board, and I believe in you. I believe in each and every one of you, regardless of the challenges that we face. I believe with the, um, parent engagement, you know, that we could salvage whatever is going wrong. Um, I wanna start by referring to this little slogan we have that says, it's either if or when we see something, say something. And I wanna turn, I wanna add a parent piece to that that says, when we say something, let's do something. All right? So when we see something, we're gonna say something. And then when we say something, let's collaborate and do something. Um, the general feeling right now is as if you all are not doing anything. I can't stand here and say that's true because I am seeing a lot happening. Um, with the building committee and, and, you know, different aspects of the work is happening. Um, I just wanna say that sometimes the district also acts in silos, just like the community partners. And I keep saying, if the community partners pull together, it would be such a great help for the community and also to, um, the things that the Board of Ed would like to achieve. I'm not happy that I now have to go to, I now have to add another meeting to my already busy schedule. I have to go to the PNZ meeting, um, you know, to address things there. I'm a little bit upset about the reasons why the, the MLK project is sort of like, you know, on hold a little bit. Um, a couple of years ago, Precious, Ms. Precious Ellis Ross and I, we did outreach the historical society, asking the very same question. Is MLK building, um, on the registry or should it be on the registry? I, I'm gonna step into the little, the little minority box and said, you know, our minority voices were not heard. And so now this same question sort of comes back to, to hinder the process. Um, I'm not taken kindly to anything that hinders the process of the MLK renovation. I consider it an integral part of the district model of excellence and the path we have education, we have planned together. So I'll be going over to the PNC to, um, reiterate that on behalf of my community, on behalf of my Board of Ed. Um, talking about community, I'm really anxious first to have that community school education, um, conversation. Because I think our community partners will have to tweak their programs to meet the community vision. Um, I envision schools open on Saturday mornings where our kids get extra classes in areas that they're weak. And while they're upstairs taking classes, I could see community courses going on for their parents downstairs. Um, you know, things like that. I, I could see recreation happening from one to six on a Saturday. You know, provide a community environment to welcome our kids and our families. Um, you know, one of the things that, that bothered me, I'm just gonna shoot ahead into another area. One of the things that bothered me was, this is a classroom, um, positive and negative consequences list of a class my son was in, which I, I asked for him to be removed from. Because just the second part here says, uh, you know, they talk about rewards and incentives. I don't consider recess a reward. My son have to get recess. Because he is very active. He's described as busy. So that's not a reward. He needs that time. So, um, you know, we will have another way. We will have to find another way to, to, to get him to behave if he's misbehaving. I'm an engaged parent. The teacher called three, four times, and I went three, four times. You know, I missed work. I'm behind in my college studies. And I was very traumatized by trying to, to be an engaged parent. But any classroom policy that says violation one, violation two, violation three, violation four, violation five, that just sounds too much like the school-to-prison pipeline mentality for me. So my question would be, um, do we need standard, standard, um, methods of discipline across the district? Or do we just leave this open to each individual school and teacher? Because it's getting scary out here. When I tell you I was, I was traumatized by my interaction with a teacher, and I'm not gonna go into details. I just wanna say, thanks to Principal Stone, Principal Stone, for her, um, fast and, and able response to, to, to what my son needed at that time. Um, no way we should be saying we have bad kids. I'm saying to everyone, if you don't believe in our kids, then, then leave the system. We don't have bad kids. If we wanna say we have bad kids, then we have bad teachers, and we have bad parents, and we have bad people on the Board of Ed. So I hope, I beg to differ. We don't have bad kids. We have kids who experienced the trauma and really need that character development piece attached to the school, um, the in-school suspension. Don't take him out of class and leave him doing nothing. Do something that could help him recognize his errors and help him to grow. Um, I wanna talk to, I, I, I know, I wanna talk really quickly to the Title I funding. You know, we, I, I am personally tired of ghost, ghost PTOs and SGCs. I hope this year could be a real process. I would like to, um, ask the board if you could release more than one percent of the Title I pot for parent engagement. Um, our parents are really struggling. And, um, one of my challenges has always been not being able to offer incentive and perks to help those parents come out. And we say we don't need any perks. Well, I need perks. Because my Husky insurance going down. All right? My food stamps going down. So if I'm coming, I can't come hungry like I am now. You know, these are realities that we as parents are facing. Um, I just wanna encourage the parent engagement piece, please. Let's start the community leadership meetings. You know, at least I could be a voice going out there, echoing the positive ideas you would like us, you know, to share so that we could balance, you know, the load of all this pressure that we are facing and all this hurt that we are facing. So I wanna suggest, um, Dr. Torres, that somehow, let's see if we could do this together, please. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I'm assuming that, uh, parent is still out in the hallway. Um, so again, I'd just say for the staff that's in the audience, if we can please find a way to get that testimony translated. I, um, am interested in that. And, um, on another note, she made some accusations about, uh, child labor that I really need to understand, the board needs to understand, excuse me. So, um, just again, if we can get that to the superintendent so she can relay that to the board, we appreciate that. Um, moving on. Um, and I just wanna add again, um, if we're going to, oh. Excellent. Thank you for coming back. I just wanted to, um, there was a portion of your testimony that, um, you were passionate about, and I didn't, I missed the English translation. Um, so forgive me for that. And it was the last portion of your, um, your testimony, and it was after you said that you contacted the superintendent. Um, and then you started to say things in Spanish.
Yes. What I was telling her was that I had came to her, I contacted her, I offered my services. I've been working in the community for over thirty years, and now I didn't mention it, okay? So I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. I was the first resource A that was hired in the school system. I've done tutoring, you name it, and I've done it, okay? I've worked as, I, I worked in the social service field with the Department of, of Health and Human Services as a community activist, grassroots organizer, you name it, and I've done it. So because of my background, I came to her and I, and to ask her to let her know I am here. Parents know me. Families knows, knows me. The Hartford knows me. I've dealt with children. I ran the Hartford Housing Authority gang tax force for a couple of years as well. I, you name it, I've done it. And because of that, I came to her. I told, I didn't ask her for a dollar sign. That's what I say. No tenía un signo de dólar. I didn't have a dollar sign, what I was offering her. I just wanted to be of help. But she just said, I will call you. I met, and I didn't only meet with her once. I met with her more than once. The call never came back. So what that proved, what I told her in Spanish, that, that proves to me is that she doesn't care about our children, and she doesn't care about her parents. Because if she did, she would have welcomed my offer with open arms. It didn't have a dollar sign. For you to support, for you to really engage yourself, to give a helping hand to a parent in me, especially parents with children with disability, doesn't have a dollar sign. Or you have to have his heart. And that's exactly what I have in abundance. And I, and I, and, you know, and I want to express that to you. And, and also, I also told her that some of the incidents that their parents share, that's just the icing on the cake, like I told her. There's just so many horror stories out there that I am very much aware of because I have already met with these parents. Many of them came from Puerto Rico after Hurricane María. They have children with disability until now, it's been months, and many of those children have not even been diagnosed. And the school system has denied them the services. Because, oh, no, oh, it's the language barrier. That's what they're telling the children. So, you know, I mean, when you see that, you understand what I'm trying to say? What does that say to me and to the many others in our community? No one cares. I mean, and I've, I've shared some of the stories of these parents with some of her staff. I even called her assistant in, of the occasions who took notes of speaking. When I couldn't get in touch with Dr. Sellers because the situation was very serious. So, I mean, you know, I'll drop there right now if she was to take that microphone and say, I didn't know anything about it, for real. Because, you know, really, it has been, it has been, it has come to your attention. Your staff, your immediate staff have been aware of it. But yet, the situation keeps getting worse and worse. So what that proves to me, yeah, she has this staff here that are running after every parent once they come up PNC there. But what they, what does that mean? The situation is gonna be solved? Really? I mean, I already proved that it's not gonna be solved because they can only do so much. At the end of the day, the ball is on her side of the handbook court. And she calls the shots because she's the boss. But unfortunately, it's not happening. And they can only do so much because they're not out in the schools. So they can go investigate once in a blue moon, and they're gonna act like it's fine. When they leave, you already know. You already know. Like they, I'm gonna say my English French, hell breaks loose in the schools. And they still end up doing whatever they want to and how they want to. And this parent, they deny her the right for that child, that request. And it was just last month. And the vice principal to her at Burn School, well, I just wanna let you know that before you got here, you know, I just need to let you know that we already had met and we made a decision on your son. We denied your request. I mean, how dare you say that to her? We're talking, this just happened three days ago at Burn School. She was furious, the parent was furious, broken tears. And I tried to be very nice, I tried to, and I let them know what you're doing is wrong and it's against the law. She gave birth to that child, you didn't. And that's her right. The last decision is on her, not on yours. But you see, we definitely are, I mean, we're just playing games with parents for too long. And like I told Leslie in Spanish, tiene que parar, it has to stop, and, and it has to stop now. It, this cannot continue to happen.
Okay. If you could please leave the information with Christina?
Most definitely.
I appreciate that.
No, most definitely.
There are some things that we want to follow up on, so we'll allow the superintendent to get the information to the board. But just wanted to appreciate, um, I just wanna acknowledge what you said. I appreciate what you said, and I just wanted to make sure that our colleagues...
No, and you know, and by all means, I also would like to take this time just to thank you. Thank you for calling me back so that you can really hear in your native language what I was saying because I think it is very, very important. And for less than what the employees of principals and teachers are doing to the children with disability in the schools, for less than that, parents, DCF will come to a home and remove the child. And last but not least, I just came to me, one of the parents said, "Tamari's." Uh, one of the parents that just spoke, she says, "You forgot one important detail." I said, "What is that?" She says, "What they do to us is, if we go and complain, they call DCF on us." And Ms. June is very well, most, very much aware of that because I brought that to her attention. So the parents that have children with disability, whenever they come to a school and they open their mouth and they try to advocate, the first thing they do, oh, you know what? We're just gonna call DCF so they can give you additional services. What are you calling DCF on me for? But that's the way of shutting the parent up. And one of the parents that spoke here actually went through that for no reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so we're gonna move on to reports. Report of the chair. Um, I'm going to, I had it written out this time, but I'm going to sort of paraphrase it in the interest of time. Um, there is a, uh, I'll, I'll start with the CAPE Annual Convention. Uh, it's coming up in November, and, um, the superintendent and, um, some board members were selected or invited to do a panel discussion on, um, governance and governance team and working together in collaboration. Uh, so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, that will be presented to all the Board of Educations in the state, so that's about a hundred and sixty-eight municipalities. Um, and so that is, um, exciting. Uh, the other thing I wanna mention in terms of CAPE is there's a diversity, statewide diversity... The other thing I want to mention in terms of CAE is there's a diversity, statewide diversity committee that's working on trying to attract more minority board members, Hispanic and Latino board members, and trying to figure out how we could do more collaboration, more work together from city, urban areas versus suburban areas. So that's good work, looking forward to that. I just want to make a note that we will have at some point in the near future, the opportunity to name schools or rename schools. I know there was a concern in the community about renaming some schools. And after consulting with colleagues, the best advice we could give would be to follow the policy, have a generic, a more local school community type of initiative and have that discussion. And then if you want to continue with a name change or name recommendation, then go through that, that particular process. We have completed the superintendent's evaluation and we are, again, have a agenda item to, for contract extension. And I have to add a executive session at the end of the meeting, a very quick one, maybe 10 minutes or so, at the end of the meeting, so we can go over future strategies for next year. So I just wanted to add that. And in the future, the board is considering having a chef discussion. We want to organize that because we want to have a constructive conversation about chef integration and quality schools in Hartford. And we want to find solution instead of continuously pointing out the problems. And that's a new thing for me, so I'm looking forward to that. I appreciate that. And the last thing, the Hartford School Building Committee did approve an item to continue the construction process with the state. However, there is a question with the architectural plans and we were told that that would not affect the timeline. And there is a consideration to change the design from the design that the parents chose to a different option. And again, that is being initiated by the Planning and Zoning Committee. The motion passed the Hartford Building Committee. The chairman, Mr. Melvin Cologne, is also a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee. So if you have any questions or concerns, your questions and concerns actually should be directed to the Hartford Building Committee and not the Board of Education because we approved the specs that were put in front of us. And that concludes the chair's report. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Stallings. I have a few items to report on. The Hartford Lectio Institute, a literacy team from Hartford Public Schools participated in the Hartford Lectio Training Institute that took place last week. The initiative was supported by our City of Hartford Partners, Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, United Ways Grade Level Reading Campaign, and the Fund for Greater Hartford. Overall, the work was funded by an academic dean at Hartford Graduate School of Education. And Lectio supports stakeholders in analyzing early childhood literacy investments and programs in order to determine, one, the efforts, the outcomes, and how those can be sustained over time. And so the focus was around strategies and collectively measuring the impact on children's not only healthy development, but early literacy success. Also, along with our initiatives and our focus on early literacy in our third grade proficiency goal, we continued our participation in the Literacy Leadership Institute. This one is sponsored by Connecticut Council for Education Reform and the Connecticut Association of Schools. The institute sessions have focused on the research behind the literacy instruction as well as the practical application, right? The knowledge and the skills that our teachers need in order to implement the skills. Participants have used tools provided by the institute not only to capture data, but then to implement the strategies. And the data continues to be used in our Office of Academics and instruction to create additional plans that align to our strategic plan. Just a reminder to everyone that college, October is college and career awareness month and many of our schools are having various activities to attend, to not only encourage, but celebrate college readiness with our students and families. And I'm gonna, given that October is National Farm to School Month and we know that we have a stellar nutrition department in, in our district, I wanted to highlight that our Food and Nutrition Services Division is a recognized regional leader in the national farm to school movement. And last month, the National Association of State Departments of Agriculture had leaders from across the country gather here in Hartford at their annual conference. And it's their, the association's mission is to grow and enhance partnerships and arrive at sound policy across stakeholders. And we know that Lonnie Burke, our senior director of our department, hosted a joint tour with the executive director of Hartford Knox to share the successes and how we are collaborating on Hartford grown local produce and making that come alive for our students every day. Little note on athletics, which we all heard Ms. Hyacinth kind of steal the thunder here, but seniors from Hartford Public High School football team had the opportunity to have a private meet and greet with Governor Malloy and some alum from Hartford High, inclusive of Representative Ritter, last month for the approval of the $1.1 million bond commission, from the bond commission which approved funding to add lights as well as synthetic turf to the athletic facilities at Hartford High. The funding, as you know, will not only benefit Hartford High students, but it will also assist athletic programs throughout our district. The lights on the field will provide the district with opportunities, of course, to extend the hours of playtime for our students and for multi-sport. Synthetic turf is going to alleviate some of the flooding that often results in late game cancellations. Lastly, I'll report on the Monitoring Advisory Group. As you know, the Monitor Advisory Group is a structure that was instituted after we transitioned from the independent monitor, given all the work that we continue to do in response to the Office of the Child Advocate Report. And the role of the monitoring group is to monitor our district's implementation of the action plan in all areas of our strategic plan. The Monitoring Advisory Group is comprised of a variety of representatives, the Office of the Child Advocate, the State Department of Education, the State Board of Education, special education advocacy agencies like the African American and Caribbean Parents of Children with Disabilities, former Hartford Public School Principals, a current principal, the Village Children and Families, and some senior leaders. And in our first quarterly meeting, the group was presented with an overview of the strategic plan and how the action plan is embedded without, throughout the entire plan and all of our priorities around student safety and creating a culture of inclusion and where students feel safe and valued. We also talked, we presented our data and our performance indicators around some of the work, along with the policy moves and improvements that have been made in response to the OCA report and the adult learning that has taken place so that we can build capacity in our adults to not only keep our students safe, but also to meet the students' needs. We had, you know, transparent and productive conversations around the performance indicators and some positive feedback was given to us around the fact that we continue to improve our work around the whole student, that there is clear alignment between what our goals are and what the OCA report called for. And the Monitoring Advisor Group acknowledged the heavy lift that we have in special education and the fact that, you know, several of those agencies, OCA, State Department of Education, referenced that Hartford for years had not had special education at the forefront of their improvement work and that clearly they see that we do now and that it's a heavy lift for us. And that they acknowledged that we're, we're moving in the right direction. They also had some areas of improvement for us. They'd like to see more longitudinal data, they want to see our data, you know, from two to three years ago. And also they're looking for more evidence of adult learning. There's a lot that we've been doing around special education and I'll reference some of those in a minute. But they actually want to see how are we defining the outcomes for the adults? And they also would like to see how we are doing, how our data compares to state averages. For example, we reviewed data around staff that has been placed on leave due to investigations, reports that have been made for DCF. And so they want, they would like to see how that data compares to other districts throughout the state. And some of that data, we, it might not be easy for us to get, but nonetheless, it was a recommendation. It's important to highlight also the fact that, you know, the Office of Student Support Services, they're very intentional in the professional learning opportunities and the family engagement that they've been engaging in and will continue to engage in. And I will send you a list of a variety of professional learning sessions that they have, not only for staff, but for our parents as well. You know, I know that, you know, public comment and we value public comment and we take those very seriously and we respond. You know, if it's, if it's not the superintendent responding, it doesn't mean that it's not being responded to. And I know you all know that, but I just feel it's important to capture that. And I'll, you know, some of the professional learning sessions that continue to be ongoing is around access, participation, and progress. You know, the IEP process itself, what goes into making an inclusive culture, special education and 504, understanding the expectations around that, what principals need to know, for example, around the new guidelines for special education, federal and state mandates regarding the special education process. So there, there's a lot that has been done in terms of the professional learning and now we just have to make sure that, right, we continue to improve on the work. Also wanted to quickly touch base on paraeducators and the guidance related, the provision of paraeducators. The Office of Student Support Services, along with the Office of Talent Management, continue to work collaboratively to ensure that student adult supports were on boarded in a timely manner at the beginning of the school year. No paraeducators have been removed from students who need this level of support. As you all know, a reduction in services is only done through the PPT process and it is informed by data and evidence. And so local matters regarding opportunities, assignments, and transfers of paraeducators are made outside of the PPT process, right? Those, we have unions, we have contracts that are at play, and so those are separate than the PPT process. So school teams are strongly advised to communicate with and include families in the collaborative process and to proactively address related concerns around the changes in PPT processes. So we continue to work with our schools and building their capacity around that. So I just wanted to reference that because all of that is encompassed in our work and in our response to the Office of the Child Advocate Report. And that concludes my comment, my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, we, our student representative is not here. And Finance Audit Committee, I'm not sure if any other board member wants to speak on the committee, but I'm simply not going to do a finance and audit report since one of the business agenda items will speak to the accounting, changes in accounting practices that the finance department is trying to implement. So I will allow the superintendent and the CFO to do that presentation. Moving on, 3.5, Family Community Engagement. Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Family and Community Engagement Committee met on Wednesday, October 3. Ms. Newt Blackberg, the Chief Outreach Officer of Family and Community Engagement, presented an overview of the newly created Office of Outreach Community Partnerships and Family Engagement. This office brings together functions that had been previously housed in other departments so that we can develop and implement a comprehensive district framework for partnerships and engagement. We are considering working with Four Points, the consultants who assisted with the development of the DME, to conduct a comprehensive assessment of partnerships and services in the district and assess the current structure of this office. Ms. Blackberg reported that there was a preliminary assessment of all partnerships last year, which was a great starting point, but we need to make sure that our partnerships are effective. We discuss the functions of the Welcome Center, which has been folded into this office, and the role of the ombudsman, which was previously held by Ms. Martha, Martha Bentham, who retired last year. The Welcome Center assists families with registration, transportation, paraeducator requests, services to the homeless, and other issues that come up. And as of the meeting date, they had attended to 507 visits from families. Ms. Fagan and Ms. Ramirez have been covering all the functions of the Welcome Center. Ms. Blackberg indicated that she, together with Ms. Mary Mitchell and Ms. Judith Fagan, have been taking on all the meetings and fieldwork that Ms. Bentham used to do. We are still evaluating the role and the position of the ombudsman to determine whether we can combine it with another job function. But in the meantime, Ms. Judith Fagan, who is on staff, is a trained ombudsman and can cover that function as needed. The Office of Outreach Community Partnerships and Family Engagement is reviewing policies regarding parental involvement, SGC, and parent organizations to ensure that we have district-wide policies and consistency across schools. They have finalized an internal volunteer protocol. And questions were raised about field trip chaperones and they will be included in our volunteer protocols. We also talked about the need of training for volunteers and on issues such as confidentiality and mandated reporting and other issues that come up. So all of these items are on the agenda of the Office of Outreach. The Office of Outreach has also assumed responsibility for the professional development for family resource aides and for school family resource providers to ensure consistency across schools in the services that we provide to the families. In the past, we have found that some schools were using a family resource aides in functions that are, fall outside of their job. And we want to make sure that their functions are covered at all the schools. Also, the training for school governance councils is being assumed by this office. Ms. Carla Cruz has developed a calendar and a curriculum and there'll be senior staff from other areas of the district that will be involved in providing training to our school governance councils. The Office of Outreach has developed a calendar of events, which includes a symposium on November 10 at Buckley entitled Journey Through HPS and that sort of the start of this. But they've got events for every month throughout the year. And the idea is to provide engagement opportunities for parents and also to provide learning and training opportunities for them. There are several of our partners who are willing to engage in this and cooperate with us in developing these events. And certainly there'll be more about this as the year progresses. And I think that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Next, we have Policy Committee. Ms. Taylor.
Good evening. So the Policy Committee met on Thursday, October 4. No thanks to me. I actually had a work meeting, so, so the Policy Committee meeting was run by Ms. Glanville. From what I understand, what was covered in that meeting was the, a review of the school governance council policy. They had further updates as a result of the committee meeting to include changing parent to legal guardian and making it principal's responsibility to ensure that minutes and SGC member contact information is available to the school community. The SGC guidelines will be shared with the committee, which makes it clear that the superintendent or designee has the final say on a principal candidate. superintendent or designee has the final say on a principal candidate. Ms. Glanville, did you have anything additional to add on this particular? No? Okay, great. Thank you so much for running the meeting in my absence. We also reviewed list of policies to be repealed, as was suggested by a review of policies done by a law firm. These will also go before the board for a first, second read, and adoption. I actually started a new job earlier this summer, and the transition has been kind of difficult balancing between my parenting and my service and my rigorous now corporate work schedule. So I am considering an adjustment to the meeting days and times for Policy Committee meetings. I'll keep you all posted on that. Once we decide on a final schedule, that is something that can be more accessible for the chair, myself. Policy Committee is also considering a legislative agenda. We have so many things that are kind of happening in the background around cases that relate to education to include Chef and the Robinson case, school building funds, local elections coming up. I think it would be a really great thing for us to be able to tackle kind of a legislative agenda, to be able to advocate for our students on a different level. We definitely need to have diverse political voice within this process. It's our responsibility to serve as advocates and representatives for the students within our district. So Policy Committee is also considering something to that effect, a legislative agenda for this upcoming year. Also be on the lookout for a Policy Committee workshop that will include the processes that were really implemented by Dr. Vasquez Matos. He has really lended his expertise to the Policy Committee, to our process, helping us to more streamline the work that we're doing and to make sure that the work that we have within our policies is compliant on a statutory level. So a policy workshop will be given at some point during this academic year for us to be able to really explain that process to the larger audience. Also be on the lookout for a policy retreat to happen at some point when there is a gap in scheduling for Policy Committee members. And I really just wanted to give a shout out to my committee members who really have been carrying the load, particularly in my absence, to Shante Brody, who often comes and serves as kind of like a stand-in committee member on many of our, our board committees, and also to Ms. Ayesha Clark for really just holding down the fort for Policy Committee. And that concluded my report for this evening. And Ms. Glanville, who ran the meeting in my absence. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And please be on the lookout for that because I'm looking forward to it. So next, School Choice and Facilities Committee. Ms. Glanville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, School Choice and Facilities Committee, we had pretty much one large agenda item around transportation. There's a lot of attachments actually to the board report that I think I would love for, for everybody, if they have time, to actually look at. The attachments have a lot of data, and then that will continue to be the basis and inform what we hope will be sort of a comprehensive reimagination of, of our, our transportation policy and practices with a view toward June of 2019, which is when our transportation contract will be renewed, or is, is the current contract, the specialty, is up. Just an overview, some of the things that we, we looked at and discussed and heard from staff members about our current practices and policies around this that I think, and again, there's more in the attachments that I think are of interest. I'll just go through a couple of, of the highlights. So we talked about the, the current transportation guidelines by grade. For K to 1, it's, students receive transportation if they are more than 0.5 miles from the year-old school. Two to fifth, second to fifth grade, more than a mile. Sixth to eighth, more than one and a half miles. And nine to 12, if they live more than two miles away from the school, they'll receive transportation. The other guideline that dovetails with this, that governs whether a student gets transportation, the other guidelines are neighborhood schools, transportation is not provided to students outside of their school zone. And I'm sorry, all of these are for regular education transportation. We did not discuss special transportation at this meeting, although that is a very significant piece of our transportation budget, which we will be hearing about in a future meeting. So the other guidelines are that transportation is not provided to preschool-aged students tending Hartford Public Schools unless the child has an IEP. Students who end up being placed in a neighborhood school outside of their zone due to space will be provided transportation for one year. And families in transition may receive transportation regardless of their, their school or resident zone. That applies to homeless families and other families considered to be in transition. And then of particular interest, and we, we talked about this a lot, and also looked at some projections on this, which I'll get into. So we have some schools, Achievement First, Global, the Magnet Schools, Hartford Magnet Schools, all high schools, Jamoki Academy, Grace Academy. All of those schools are, transportation is provided to students citywide regardless of where they live. And that's, that's part of the transportation that we, as a district, provide for specialty. So that, so one of the things that was, was interesting for the committee to learn about was that even, you know, schools that aren't our schools, that aren't Hartford schools, give Grace Academy, Jamoki, Achievement First, that, that specialty is providing, we're providing transportation for those schools as well. And so a couple of the asks that we're going to be hearing back on are just trying to understand more what the legislative law, legal context around our obligations in regard to those, to provide transportation for schools that are not our, that are not Hartford schools are, and what the MOUs are that govern those obligations. So that's something that we'll hopefully be getting more information on. We also, we also heard a history of the tier system and how it works in practice, which is the system of having the three different start times for schools and three different, therefore, utilization blocks of the buses. And there's, the first tier is 7:20 a.m. drop-off time, second tier is 8 a.m. drop-off time, and the third tier is 8:35 a.m. drop-off time. And it was explained quite helpfully to, to the committee how having the tiers has allowed us to make the maximum utilization of, of buses because one bus can then serve three different schools. So you're paying for the bus for the whole day, and so by utilizing a tier system, we're able to make the maximum use of buses. We had some discussion about, you know, how the tiers are decided among different schools. There's been a lot of discussion on a national level about high school start times and earlier, or later start times for high school, and whether that has ever been a consideration or factor in the times at which we are having the tiering for high schools. And we heard some interesting information from the staff on that about how, you know, those things, of course, have been considered, but that currently those, those things are not factored in to the, the tiering that we currently have. And we heard from Mr. Mason just about some of the challenges. We have students who are grade three or younger, they, they cannot be dropped off without a parent, and how that, that has been particularly challenging this year. We didn't hear the history previous to this year, but on half-days in particular, that we have quite a few, significant number of students that end up being returned to their school because there isn't an adult there to pick them up on half-days. So it's, with the tiers can be very helpful and obviously efficient in the use of maximizing the use of buses, but then it, it can create the other issues that we also learned about with sort of like a backlog that can happen if something happens on the first tier, and then it affects all the other tiers, particularly on half-days when you have a lot of students that end up being returned to their schools because there's not an adult there. And then we received, lastly, I'll just highlight, and I don't think that the, this is in the attachments, although a lot of the data is in the attachments around like the number of buses going to each school, and those guidelines that I just talked, that I just talked about around the, the ages and the attendant zones. But what, what was also really interesting was Mr. Mason showed us projections each, we didn't see every single school, but gave us some examples, and he has them for every single school, of like a clustering of where students are coming from around each school. And so you could see, one of the really interesting examples that he was able to highlight for us was the difference was that the Cannelly School was used as an example to show how there, like, most of the students were coming from an area right around Cannelly School, were, a lot of them walkers, and with, even with the busing, like, all very close in and around the school. And then there was the other kind of contrasting example, not that there aren't like lots on the spectrum, and again, he has these for every school, was looking at Achievement First, which was really interesting, showing where the school was, and then like the clustering of the dots of where students were coming from was literally like a scatter shot all over the entire district that we are providing transportation for that. Again, per the guidelines for any students that they're in the younger grades that live more than a half-mile away from the school. And then as you go up, the, the radius gets bigger, but it was, it was a lot of students spread out all over the district. So I really encourage everybody to look at some of this data. We will definitely be using it as the committee to inform our work going forward. And one of the other issues that I'll just note was raised was that some of the other committees might be getting some work from this. We noted that particularly the Teaching and Learning Committee, maybe policy, that the, that some of the questions around the work that we are doing definitely touch on the other, other committees, certainly finance and teaching and learning, so look out for that. Juan's not here, but I'll, I'll give him a heads up. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And with that, Teaching and Learning, the chair is not here, but I will open it up to any committee members who want to discuss what happened. Sure.
Mr. Hernandez was not present at the last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting because he was ill, and he's away on business today, so I will present the report. The committee met on October 2nd. We were talking about the major actions in Teaching and Learning that are related to graduation rate, which is one of the major goals of the DME. Firstly, we spoke about the completion of Algebra I and how we're going to, we are having an intense focus on Algebra I because it has been shown that students who fail Algebra I at a very high risk of dropping out of school. And also, it's a gatekeeper course. You have to be able to complete it before you can go on to more advanced math courses. Most of the meeting was dedicated talking about closed reading, which is the approach that we are using for reading with our higher grades. We know that with the lower grades, we're talking about guided reading. Now, closed reading is an instructional routine in which the students critically examine a text, especially through repeated readings. It's an interaction between the reader and the text, where they make careful observations of the text and interpretations of those observations. They develop, hopefully, the necessary habits to engage with a complex piece of text. It includes building stamina and persistence when confronted by reading that isn't easily consumed, that not necessarily easy to read. The discipline of closed reading goes beyond our English Language Arts classes. It will be engaged across multiple subjects, not just by the reading teachers, but, but all teachers, including, for example, science and math. Dr. Nagro, our chief academic officer, indicated that her office is working with the directors of all the other subjects so that they can understand and support their teachers in professional development when it comes to this approach of closed reading. Ms. Avila pointed out that they're not just teaching content, but they're teaching the students to understand what they're reading. There was a concern from some board members about realistic implementation schedule, and Dr. Nagro pointed out that different schools and different teachers are at a different place in this process. In, in some schools, they have been utilizing this approach for quite a while. For other schools, it's a new concept. So she has asked the staff to do a self-assessment of their needs so that we can differentiate what the professional learning needs are for each area. The directors of the different subject areas also need to break down what closed reading looks like for their specific subject area and to understand and engage in conversations with their students. And I think it's about it. I would like to point out that summaries for each of our committee meetings are available on board docs if you have access to a computer and you'd like to look at that. Ms. Santiago has been kind enough to upload those there. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot about that. Thank you. That's, that's actually a good addition. So thank you for that. Appreciate that. So moving on to the business agenda, and I'm going to try to go pretty quickly. So we're going to go, business agenda, item number one, resolution to approve the superintendent's contract extension. I don't know if there's any comments. I'm just going to open up to any comment or debate because there's nothing for the superintendent to present. Is there any comment, any debate? Hearing none, I am going to raise the motions. There are motions to approve the superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, request to extend her employment contract for an additional one-year term through June 30th, 2021.
So moved.
It's been moved to the second?
Second.
It's been moved to the second, all in favor of approving this contract. This motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I, I bet the motion carries. Item number two, which is contract approval for service, special education service providers. And I will let Madam Superintendent give the background.
I'll also ask our chief financial officer, David Flag, to join us, and I don't know where Dr. Sellers is, but, you know, we were talking about operational effectiveness as one of our priorities, and we often are faced with the dilemma around our speech and language pathologies and the fact that we have a shortage, not only in, in our state, but nationwide. And so in order to stay ahead of the challenge that we have, we are exploring a new way of having immediate access to a contract and, and agencies that will provide staff available for us so that we don't have to engage in compensatory time. So we are proposing and looking for approval of four agencies that will be able to deliver the services. David, I'll turn it over to you to expand a little bit on that.
Sure. Yeah, we're just looking for, piggyback off the superintendent's comments, we're just looking for the ability to staff some of these resources as quick as possible. So what you have in front of you is, is an option to have four contracts up to $500,000 each, which would be about five resources in each contract. I think today, if, I'm sure Dr. Sellers, we're six or seven people short, which is about $600,000 to $700,000 of contract work that we would need. The concept here is simply to give us the ability to go out and get resources as soon as possible, but then also, over time, start to learn and test the abilities of each one of these, each one of these companies against each other, and hopefully even drive some price down over time.
Sorry, that's short and sweet. Oh. Is there any comments and questions, which I'm sure there are? Any questions or comments? Okay, so I'll ask my first question. Can you speak to the accounting just a little more? I don't, I'm not sure if, I'm on the Finance Committee, so I, I kind of understand it, but... I don't, I'm not sure if, I'm on the finance committee, so I kind of understand it, but in terms of the, creating the competition, is a cost measure incentive, but if you can just talk about the actual in-house accounting?
Yep. So the accounting doesn't change on our end. What we'll end up doing is, we have strict monitoring today for the CBS Therapy contract that's in place today. So what we end up doing is simply, if we need a new SLP resource from one of these firms, before Dr. Sellers and her team go out and solicit that resource, we ensure that the money is in her budget and a salary line. Because essentially, that's all we're doing is trading off here. We just, we can't find a full-time resource to hire, so we go out to one of these firms to get a resource either temporarily or for some period of time. So the control's in place that she can never overspend because if the money's not in the budget on the salary line, then the money can't be applied to any of these contracts. So hopefully.
That's what I like. Any other questions? Ms. Glanville?
It's not really a question, it's just a comment that, I mean, this has been, and you stated this as well, but this has just been a recurring thing since, certainly I've been on the board every year, we have these significant contracts because we know of this shortage. So I mean, I think this, I mean, this seems like an innovative way of addressing it. I mean, I hope it really helps because I think it's, it's a market for speech pathologists to, even with these agencies, I'm taking it, like, they go to different, they have their choice. So we're kind of covering, it seems like maximizing our access at any given moment by having these four, so. Thank you for being responsive to our continuing question. I mean, I know the board has always asked these questions about this and asked for some outside-the-box thinking. I know, I'm sure there's still more, and it certainly doesn't address the shortage issue, which is bigger than us, but I feel, I feel, from a governance perspective, very happy to have, had you all be very responsive to these questions.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I just.
Mr. Flores?
Make a comment because at the finance committee meeting, there was concern about having four contracts and it being, there being some budgetary impact. And, oh, Mr. Flack explained it already, but Dr. Sellers is not asking for an increase in the budget. What she's asking for is the opportunity to reach out to these providers when she has a shortage of staff without having to come every time there's a shortage to ask for approval, which will then delay the process. So it's, it's really very similar to substitute teachers. We have the opening, we have the money budgeted, and all we need is the facility to acquire the personnel at the time that we need it.
Thank you. So that works for me. I think it's innovative and it's worth a shot, and I appreciate the effort. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I am just going to raise the motion. There's a motion on the floor to authorize the superintendent to execute, oh, excuse me, take that back. There's a recommendation on the floor to authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with four service agencies detailed below for a term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2019 at a cost not to exceed $500,000 per contract. Is there a motion? It's been moved there, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of the action, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Give me a second, let me just zip through this big packet. And so we are doing, oh, no, went too far. Yeah, I'm actually trying to read the stuff, so, all right, so, no, no, I'm just going to do it again. Item number three is a acceptance of the funds BAR Foundation grant, planning for post-secondary success. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is the second grant from the BAR Foundation. This one will focus on planning for post-secondary success. Just to clarify, the first grant is designated for Hartford Public High School around programming design and innovation for our students that are overage and undercredited. Since we had some conversation in our finance committee meeting, I did have a conversation with the folks at BAR, and we have decided to place on hold the grant, the first grant, so that we can work on the second grant because this second grant has a much shorter timeline. The purpose of this grant is to deeper, to deepen our understanding of high school students' experiences post-secondary. And so this grant allows us an opportunity to engage in deep data analysis for the entire district. We know that we have access to data internally and data that is, of course, compiled by State Department of Education, but this opportunity offers data collection and analysis that is specific to each individual school's student population and their readiness for post-secondary success. For the purpose of this grant, I know this was a question, I believe, with, from Ms. Oliver at the meeting, post-secondary success as, as in this grant is defined as students that graduate and enroll in college in their first year and then return for their second year. And so this will allow us to analyze data for the cohort of students that graduated in 2016. So we're going to review data, middle school through 12th grade and then post-secondary through to the second year of college or university. And so when we look back at the data, we will be able to understand what contributed to post-secondary success or the lack of success for our students, while also pinpointing why and where along the way our students became off track. And of course, then we will be able to look forward to see what we need to do differently. One piece of data story that I'm looking for, that BAR is not necessarily going to analyze, but we will ask for, is the cohort 2016. If you, if you kind of backtrack, these were the students that were in the middle of a significant amount of change in our district, students that, you know, when we were transitioning to a portfolio district, so there was a lot that was happening for, in our, in our district and for our student. And so it's, it would be interesting to see. At the end of it all, in past two years of college enrollment, are our students, were our students actually ready for college and did they meet success year one and did they persist into year two and beyond? The work, of course, is aligned to our district priorities, especially around our teaching and learning objectives, around getting students to graduate ready, ready for college, and the fact that we want to increase our graduation rate by nine percentage points through the first implementation of our strategic plan. The funds will be used to hire additional support to help with the data piece, also to support technology and infrastructure needed for the data and then for engagement, given that we are going to do focus groups with not only students, our parents, but also with our providers. You know, we know that we have folks that are in industry that we want to really kind of align what they define as being career-ready. So accepting the funds will provide the district with much-needed support with data analysis and planning for high school to best support our student needs through high school and then beyond.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there any questions?
Just a comment.
Ms. Oliver?
So one of the things I look forward to is being able to see the strategic plan that comes out of this work. One of the things we talked about during the committee meeting was that there's been a lot of work done in this, this area previously, but we don't have the information so that we are sure that we're leveraging that knowledge and being able to always move forward, so we're not doing things cyclically. So I'm hopeful that what comes out of this is able to be shared publicly, but also in a way perhaps even just on our website, so more people, including our families, are able to see what's coming out of these grants. I think that would be great.
89.9 QFM. No, I'm sorry. I just had to do that. Kim used to DJ and just took me back. Did you want to respond to that?
So just a conversation that I did have, Ms. Oliver, with Martin Estey the other day around, he had heard about this grant and was very excited and felt, shared frustration about the fact that we've not dug into that data, not to say that the district should have already, given that there are other partners in higher ed that should also be, you know, mining and looking at this data. And so I hear you and I look forward to engaging them as part of the focus groups as well to help us define what college readiness means beyond what BAR defines as college and career-ready.
Any other questions or comment? Hearing none. There's a recommendation to authorize the superintendent to accept the funds in an amount of $150,000 from BAR Foundation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. And on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4. Is there a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item?
So moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, consent agenda is one item. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Is there a motion to, no, 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 I need to make a motion, excuse me, like I said before, I need to make a motion that we go into executive session. Is there a motion for executive session to discuss superintendent's priorities?
So moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
Thank you for that. It's been moved and seconded. So we will have executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn and go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the board will go into executive session. Oh, you know, I was going to, I was just, I'm going to right now. The board's going to go into executive session. All those who are in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to stay in this executive session, hopefully 10 minutes.
Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. We are officially out of executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved there, second?
Second.
We're now saying adjournment.[1718.35]